My name is Sally Allen and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor area. I welcome you to our Zoom forum featuring candidates for Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, districts, districts for districts four, eight, and nine. The candidates will be on the ballot in the general election on Tuesday, November 3rd. This year, the League of Women Voters is celebrating 100 years of expanding voter rights, educating voters, and shaping and influencing legislation at local, state, and national levels. We are pleased to sponsor these forums. The League is a nonpartisan civic organization that encourages informed and active participation by all citizens in government. While the League does not support candidates or parties, we do take stands on issues we have studied. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls, and thus we've been bringing you tonight's program. Our moderator this evening is Douglas Allen, and I'd like to turn it over to him and he will explain the format. Doug?
Thank you so much, Sally. This evening, we have candidates running for the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners representing three districts. The League invited all candidates to participate in these three races, but only one candidate from each district will be participating tonight. The League decided to have the three available candidates participate in one forum so that you might get to hear their views on your district's challenges. In District Four, Republican Michelle Nicolai, who is not able to attend, is running against Democrat Caroline Sanders. In District Eight, Republican Joan Nordser is also not able to attend and is running against Democrat Jason Morgan. And in District Nine, Republican Terry Linden is also not able to attend unfortunately and is running against Democrat Katie Scott. It's now my honor to introduce Democrat Caroline Sanders from District Four, Democrat Jason Morgan from District Eight, and Democrat Katie Scott from District Nine. Thank you, all the candidates, for participating in this evening's forum. The forum today will have this format. Each candidate will have an opening statement of one minute. Each candidate will then have closing statements after the question period of 90 seconds. I will ask you questions after the opening statement. I'll ask you questions which came from the Ann Arbor community. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. At appropriate times, a sign on the screen will indicate the time remaining, 30 seconds, and then stop. If you have used up your time, you will be allowed to finish up your sentence, and then your microphone will be muted so that the other candidates have an equal opportunity to participate. The candidates will begin speaking in alphabetical order. Depending on the number of questions, all candidates will have an opportunity to be the first or last to answer the questions. Mr. Morgan, we're now ready to hear your opening statement.
Thank you so much, Douglas. For folks who don't know me, my name is Jason Morgan, and I'm proud to represent District Eight and the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners. I'm running for reelection this year. I'm also very proud to serve as our current Chair of the Board of Commissioners, working to support my fellow commissioners and our communities across the county. And I also want to really thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum today and for the amazing work that you do throughout our communities to educate voters and increase civic participation in our community. I really wanted to focus on just what an amazing community we have. One of our greatest strengths as Washtenaw County is how well we come together to solve problems. It takes all of us coming together to make big positive change happen. And when I started as a Commissioner, I started seeing that, not only in the campaign, but once I was elected, seeing just how much our residents and our engaged citizens come together to tackle big problems and to come up with creative solutions to these problems. Again, just stressing how well we all work together. So I'm so glad to be with you here tonight. I'm looking forward to the conversation and looking forward to joining Commissioner Scott and Caroline Sanders here too. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Caroline Sanders, will you please give us your opening remarks?
Well, I want to say thank you. This is the second time the League of Women Voters has been kind enough to me to just let people know who I am. I am running as a Democratic candidate for Pittsfield Township to represent Pittsfield Township on the county commissioners. I have been a resident of Washtenaw County for 34 years. I've had the pleasure of living in three of the municipalities here in the county, and I believe that I have a fresh vision to bring to the county commissioners and a listening ear for my constituents that have voted for me thus far. And I believe in supporting families, health, safety, environment, and labor. And I have experience in all of those, maybe with the exception of environment. And so I'm looking forward to hopefully being selected by the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Scott?
Thank you. My name is Katie Scott. I am very happy to be here tonight, and as my fellow panelists have said, I want to extend my thanks to the League of Women Voters also for hosting these forums and the invaluable information you put out there for people voting. I also am running for reelection. I currently serve the residents of District Nine in Washtenaw County and am honored to serve as the Ways and Means Chair. So I've learned a lot about county budgets and budgets across the county. I'm also a nurse, a union leader, an activist, a mom, and an advocate for working people and families. I recently am also a public health grad student, and I'm so proud to tell people that I'm from Ann Arbor, Michigan, when I'm in those classes because, as Commissioner said, Morgan said, we have one of the best communities in the country. One of the things this pandemic has really showed us is the underpinnings of inequality in not only our country, but in our county as well. And so going forward, I cannot wait to continue to serve you and really working to strengthen the health and human services we have here in Washtenaw County.
Thanks. Okay, now for the question period. Just a reminder, you do have two minutes for each question, and Dee's going to help us out, making sure we're staying on time. Okay, so these are the questions again that came from the Washtenaw County community. And we'll start with the first question. And the first one will go to Ms. Sanders, and then Ms. Scott, you can go after, and then Mr. Morgan. Okay. "The world has changed a great deal since most of you decided to run for office. The global pandemic, ensuing economic collapse, and more recently, Black Lives Matter movement have focused attention on how these matters highlight the disproportionate burdens shouldered by the poor, the elderly, the communities of color. These present challenges to government at all levels: economic opportunities, affordable housing, safety, and public health." So the first question will relate to the enormity of these challenges. "What do you see as the major impacts these upheavals will have on the agenda of the county Board of Commissioners in the coming two years?" Ms. Sanders?
I think the major impact will be that the county will need to readjust or realign how they allocate resources. I think that we will have to put greater emphasis on the priority of putting people first and making sure that we, not only in word, but indeed, prove by our actions and our allocations that we are interested in protecting those that are the most vulnerable first and others as needed. That's just what our country has been built on, and that's what we need to continue to demonstrate. It's not that we haven't done that because we have. You know, we have a mental health village that we passed. There are a number of things that the county continues to do and show how we show up for those that are less fortunate. But these upcoming years, as a fallout from COVID, is going to force us to actually do what we say we're going to do.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sanders. And Ms. Scott, please, same question.
Thank you. It's going to be a ride. So when we finally figure out how we're going to be able to effectively treat COVID and possibly have an effective vaccine, the fallout from this pandemic will not be over for a long time. We're going to see the effects for some time to come. And those effects were there, some of the inequities were there beforehand. All COVID has done is highlight them. So one of the major challenges that we're going to have at the county really will probably be budget. And what we're looking at in terms of our budget going forward, one of our primary purposes, I believe, is our health and human services that we provide to people. And when we have those budget crunches and those budget struggles, that's where we're going to have to really triage what we think is important, and we're going to need a lot of input from the community to do that so we know what the residents of Washtenaw County feel like is important to them and is vital for their life services. You know, I'm not the first person to say this, but I firmly believe that the budget is a moral document, and we will have to be thinking about what our morals are, what our priorities are, going forward to do that budget. For the next year, we may be relatively untouched, but for the year after that, it will probably be a completely different story. So for me, my moral compass, my ethics are going to tell me that we have to put the people first. We have to put people and working families and working people at the forefront and make sure that we're taking care of our residents and we're leaving nobody behind, that we're creating progressive policy, and we have a progressive document that works to protect all the residents of Washtenaw County.
And Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. I think we're seeing, as was mentioned by Commissioner Scott, the incredible racial inequities in our community that are impacting families and particularly children. I think we've known these things have been in our community for a long time. We've taken proactive steps to start addressing these challenges, starting with creating the Office of Racial Equity a couple of years ago. I was very proud to be part of doing that work with Commissioner Felicia Braebeck, who's now running for the State House. And we've hired a racial equity officer, and she's starting to gather data, and she's engaging with residents in the community. But what I think we are seeing here with COVID-19 is that we have to accelerate that work. And I think Commissioner Scott was spot on in talking about the budget. I think the budget is where we do that work. When we allocate, I don't just look at $110 million in the general fund budget. I look at the entire $300 million that we allocate as Washtenaw County, and we have control over those funds. It sometimes makes things uncomfortable if we say we need to really, truly address racial equity and reallocate some funds from different areas of the county. But I think that's what we're talking about here. I think that's how we look at real structural change in our community going forward. So there are five big areas that I've been looking at as a Commissioner that I think touch on the things that you've asked about. First, establishing good government, ensuring that we're fair, transparent, responsible towards the county taxpayer dollars. Addressing climate change, which we know impacts every single person in our community, whether they believe in it or not. It impacts every single resident that we have here in Washtenaw County and beyond. Really focusing on addressing social justice and racial inequity and really accelerating that work, which is what we're trying to do now. And it's not easy, and it's not simple, and it absolutely involves engaging with residents in the community. Two other big areas, ensuring health and safety of our residents by investing in human services and shifting resources within our county budget to human services. And lastly, promoting economic opportunity for all parts of our county. From broadband to addressing racial equity, we're trying to do this everywhere throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And some of these questions that we're going to get into might touch on some of those things that all of you have talked about. So hopefully, others will be able to touch on some of the things that the others have said with the other answers to the other questions. Okay, I'm going to go to the environment. The county is facing a variety of threats to our water and our environment, including PFAS. The Gelman plume has been in the news a lot lately, high levels of water in the Huron River. You mentioned climate change, all these things. What do you see as the greatest environmental threat facing the residents of Washtenaw County and the environment of Washtenaw County? And tell us in the next two years, what plans might you have in addressing, you know, steps that we can take towards addressing those threats? I'll start with you, Ms. Scott, please.
I had to laugh when you were asking because I was like, the greatest environmental threat? That's really hard because I think the greatest environmental threats to our county are the same ones that are impacting our nation as a whole. So climate change and what we're seeing with greenhouse gases, the question about hydraulic fracking in the environment, about pipelines, all of those things impact us here in Washtenaw County too. Some of our homegrown issues that are of particular concern, I know that you mentioned, Doug. So we talked about PFAS in the Huron River. We talked about the dioxane plume from Gelman. A few years ago, I remember going down to the Huron River to Bandamere Park and jumping off the pier that the boats go out, the people who are rowing crew, and swimming across the river with my son. And it was such a lovely experience, and it was not something that a child who grew up in the 80s in Michigan, in the 70s and 80s, ever thought that she would do, swim in one of our rivers because they had been so polluted. We've done a good job with the Clean Water Act, like backing up some of that pollution, but the threats are still there. And so here in Washtenaw County, we really need to come to a solution about how we're going to address the Gelman plume. That's of particular importance for people in my district especially. In the next two years in the county, I hope that we are finally going to come up with a viable solution for Gelman, and we're going to have an answer on how that's going to be cleaned up, whether it's through legal action, consent judgments, or looking at Superfund for the EPA. That is definitely one of my number one priorities, to finally wrap that up with a foreseeable solution for the people of Washtenaw County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. I think our protection of our water is the biggest environmental concern that we have in our community at this time. Many of the things that Commissioner Scott mentioned are top of mind and things that we're actively engaged in right now. Certainly, the Gelman dioxane plume, that has been a huge undertaking by us at the county and with our partners at the city, the township, and the Huron River Watershed Council. That is one of our biggest issues, and we've been dealing with it for 40 years. We, as the county, really took a lot of initiative more recently with this current board a couple of years ago and said, we're done waiting. We're going to pull everybody together, finally get to an endpoint with negotiations, and either take it or leave it, at least make a decision, and move us forward, whether that's a path towards the EPA Superfund or whether that's a path towards accepting a consent judgment that we can actually work with and that will truly protect the public health of our residents to the best degree possible. So that is one of our biggest issues here in our community. But when I say water, I'm not just talking about the Gelman dioxane plume. I'm really talking about PFAS. I'm talking about the long-term health of our drainage systems, the infrastructure that we need around water. I think is a critical issue that will become ever increasingly important in the years ahead. In addition to that, we also took very significant action recently as the county commission, accelerating our carbon neutrality goal from 2035 to 2030, approving a $2.5 million investment replacing LED lighting throughout the county, which will result in nearly a 30% reduction in carbon emissions, and directing county administration to bring back bolder, more progressive, significant actions before the end of the year. Basically saying, we're going to take this seriously because it is a serious problem for our community. So we're doing a lot of things, and I think the biggest thing is making sure residents have clean, safe drinking water. Thanks so much.
I'm guessing I'm next, but I couldn't hear you, Douglas.
Sorry, we've got a little lag there on the mutes. Please.
Okay, so I won't say that the environment is something that I actually have personal experience with, but I am very interested in knowing what the experts think. I believe that water is at the absolute top of the list. It sustains life. It is a, you can't live without it, and it needs to be clean. And we need not to have a repeat of some of the other problems that we've experienced in the state. I would be interested in knowing, as a county, how do we communicate and cooperate with other counties that align or abut to our county line and sort of share any sort of problems or pollution issues? And how do we or how can we work better? I guess I also would be interested in finding out, what do our agreements look like with the businesses that are responsible for creating this pollution? Are we as hard on them as we may be on the common person that gets a driving ticket and then, for whatever reason, they can't get the driver's license back because they can't pay off those fees? Are we letting them off easy? I think that the people responsible for the damage should absolutely cover all of the recovery. And so we should look forward to seeing, how do we handle those businesses and the damage that they do to our citizens? So I would be coming in to this position, asking a lot of questions, respecting the experts that know better, and also looking to the current commissioners that have had to deal with the issues that are currently facing the county and our budget resources. I'm kind of no nonsense about that. If you did it, you pay for it.
Okay, thank you so much, all you candidates. Okay, so the next question that I'd like to ask you deals with homelessness in our community that's obviously exacerbated by COVID-19, as one of you already touched on. "A recent development has occurred, reducing the number of rooms, as you may know, that are available to the overflow residents from the Delano Center. With winter approaching, what should the county do to provide more services to address this compromised population?" We're going to go, Mr. Morgan first, and then Ms. Sanders, and then Ms. Scott. So Mr. Morgan, if you would, please.
Absolutely, thank you. This is a challenge that we had last spring when COVID first started hitting our county, making sure that we can house those who are housing insecure or homeless and doing that in a way that we can afford to do. The biggest thing is ensuring that we have a way to keep those who are in our shelters safe and secure and fed and provided adequate medical care. And there are several different ways we can do that. I know a lot of folks are concerned particularly about hotels. We're still working on whether we can continue providing hotel rooms, but as many might guess, it is extremely expensive, much more expensive than we've, than any way we've ever addressed homelessness in this community. We made the decision to allocate the millions of dollars to ensure that we could do that last spring because it was immediately necessary, and we didn't have a way to make our congregate settings more accessible or safe for residents. I know our staff are still working on what the best outcome is looking ahead, whether it's finding a way to make congregate settings safer or whether it's keeping folks in hotel rooms. And we're still working on that. So I don't know that I would have a solid answer yet. I think it's to be determined. We're still working on it, but I've heard the message loud and clear from residents that we need to make sure that our homeless community is safe. Overall, I'm looking at how we can ensure long-term stability for these individuals and their families. And we've allocated millions of dollars to this cause over the last year, and I think we have a lot more work to do. We'll see what happens with the city of Ann Arbor and their vote on an affordable housing village, but we'll keep working on this at the county. It's a huge priority for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Ms. Sanders, please, if you would.
Well, I think it's safe to say, most people, if you were to ask them on the street, nobody wants to, no one wants people that are homeless in their community. But then you have to turn around and ask them the same question. If you won't help them, where will they receive help? We don't have a problem here in Washtenaw County as bad as there is in Wayne County, even if you go to other states, you know, that are literally considered destination homeless states, California, Oregon, Washington, where it's normal to see people sleeping on the streets, every street that you're walking down. We don't see that here in Washtenaw County, but that doesn't mean that we don't have a problem here. And the first thing that comes to mind is that we just passed a mental health village. Many of the people that are homeless have mental health issues that are not addressed, and we have to find a way to better address that. But I think that looking at hotels and motels as a temporary Band-Aid is not sufficient. We have to find a more permanent solution for being able to, not only assist them temporarily, but assist them to get back on their feet and be able to become more independent and able to care for themselves in a safe environment. Not just safety for them, but safety for the rest of the residents. And so my personal feeling is that the Band-Aid isn't working, so we need to figure out something else.
Okay. And Ms. Scott, if you would, finish this up.
Thanks so much. The homelessness problem and COVID-19 is a really difficult one. And certainly, as Ms. Sanders said, we aren't the only community dealing with this. But what COVID-19 is exacerbating some of the problems of that. The COVID-19 is hitting the homeless population hard. The CDC found that in shelters in Boston, in San Francisco, and Seattle, from 3/27 to 4/19, that 25% of the people using those shelters had COVID-19. And we know that people who are homeless have higher mortality rates because of COVID-19, because of chronic disease, of food insecurity, of nutrition issues, of not being able to rest, of lack of social distancing. So these are all things that we need to address with COVID-19 and homelessness, not just the sheltering problem. We have to think about where we're feeding people and how we're getting the nutrition, how we're enabling people to have social distancing. Certainly, we have to have a broader solution to try to eliminate homelessness, to try to take care of people who are housing insecure, and that's a long-term problem we have to address. But in the immediacy, we do have to get people out of congregate settings for COVID-19 to protect the health of our whole community. As Commissioner Morgan said, we did spend millions of dollars looking at solutions for doing that in the late winter, early spring of 2020. And we're going to have to be looking at solutions like that again this year as we see COVID rates rise. We've heard the CDC tell us that we can expect 200,000 more Americans to die by the end of this year. I would really like to do what we can at the county to mitigate that and have as few of those 200,000 be from Washtenaw County. If that means looking at less congregate settings like hotels in the interim, I'm interested in exploring that possibility more for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to our fourth question. "There are two county villages that are on the November ballot. One of them is the renewal of the road funding village, and the other is the county conservation district village. In the current environment, do you favor these proposals?" Let's start with Ms. Sanders, and then Ms. Scott, and then Mr. Morgan.
Yes and yes. Roads are what we require in order to be a productive community. You have to be able to get from one Community, you have to be able to get from one area to another. Roads are also? Inadvertently responsible for division in communities. When you don't have? Sufficient ways to? Get from one community to another. And so they're important. And they need to be well-maintained. And? I just, I can't really express enough how important it is for people to have access? To all areas of this county? And without roads and well-maintained roads? And other thoroughfares, you can't do it. And it is an investment that pays off. Can't afford it once, once it goes? Sour, once it gets to the point that it has to be completely ripped up and repaired? That's a cost that you can't? You're not going to be able to find the money, just? One of the issues that we're having in Michigan in general. In terms of conservation? Washtenaw County is, is one of the greater counties? In the, in the state? Because we do do a good job? Of protecting? What we currently have? In terms of our environment and our natural resources? And it? It is something that should not fall down to the bottom of the list. And I will be voting yes on both. And? That's it for my answer, and I guess I should say to you, I haven't been saying thank you for the, for the questions, but thank you.
You're more than welcome. And Ms. Scott, same question?
Thanks, like Ms. Sanders, I also support both of these millages going forward. The roads and the, the conservation districts are integral parts to our county. I just want to say like in terms of thinking about conservation districts and what we're doing, we have a very unique character? Here in Washtenaw County. I, I've known it all along, but being able to articulate it, as I mentioned, I'm? Back in school doing my masters in public health, an online program? With students from all over the, the country and I was explaining? About Washtenaw County? And how we have this incredibly unique character here? We have some of these like century-old farms. We have the vibrancy of Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor? Some incredibly charming small towns? And miles and miles and miles of roads and land in between? That it's important that we think about how to preserve, to preserve the character of our community. That's really integral to keep Washtenaw County the special place? That it is right now. I want to make sure that we're conserving the places that we need to, so? We don't look at things in the future and, and remember things like I do from where I grew up in Oakland County? And I drive with my kid past a, a place on the way to my parents and I say, when I was a kid, that was a horse farm? And he says, you've been telling me that for 13 years? And I don't want things like that to happen here in Washtenaw County. I want to preserve those places and have those spots so that? He's driving past some of these really fantastic, unique places here in Washtenaw County? And he doesn't have to say the same thing to his children. We've preserved the character and we've preserved the roads in which to view that character. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, yes, like Caroline and Katie, I absolutely support both of these millages. I think they're, they're reasonable and critically important. The, the road millage, I know voters did approve in August pretty overwhelmingly. The NAP or Natural Areas Preservation Program Millage that's on the ballot in November here? Is a renewal and a restoration. But this is such an important millage for all the reasons that Katie just talked about. When you, when you get on the Board of Commissioners? If you're from a, an urban district, you see a whole lot of beautiful? Parts of our county and the, the rural places here in Washtenaw County. If you're a rural commissioner, I, I assume you get? A whole lot of perspective about the unique challenges and, and issues that we face in the urban communities, Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti in particular. And the NAP millage is particularly for rural communities? But it's also for the urban communities as well. This program preserves acres and acres of land? That really keeps all of those beautiful things there for us. It preserves those centuries-old farms, those family-owned pieces of land? And those just really amazing parts of what we have here in Washtenaw County. And so I just want to add to? Add to that to say that? We, we think very carefully before we put millages on the ballot at the Board of Commissioners? Because we know we have a really strongly supportive community? And we know residents want to support progressive, good public policy and they actually agree with funding those things? Which is unique from other parts of the country, especially from where I grew up in rural Michigan. And so we just want to make sure that? The voters are, are with us on those things and I think they will be in November and I'm very happy to support those things, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, thank all of you for answering that question. I'm going to do a little time check with my? With my tech people to make sure that we have enough time to do another question. Is that okay? All right. So we had Ms. Beeman, as you, you all know Ms. Beeman? Shannon on before you and I felt? The way that she talked about broadband access kind of just brought to light the, the inequities going on from? People who have it and people who don't and? Just really opened my eyes to the fact that people who are, you know, don't have that, just don't? There's so many things that they're, they're not able to, to tap into economically and? And, you know, education? And that's what this question is touching on. And I understand there was a comprehensive study done by the county about broadband access and some of you might be a lot, very close to this issue. So in light of the barriers of access? And adoption and affordability across the county? What would you do? If you're elected to hasten? County-wide broadband? And consider, please consider your answer in light of your own, your own district. Let's start with, if we can? Ms. Scott and then we'll go to Mr. Morgan and then finish up with Ms. Sanders please.
I'm so glad that you brought this up Doug, thanks. And, and I know I've talked to Commissioner Beeman? About this at length, we even had a whole working session? Where we talked about the issues of broadband in the county? And I said at that meeting and I still feel the same way, when we had that meeting, it was like the scales fell from my eyes. I had no idea? That there were people in the county who had such issues with getting broadband access? I was really insulated in my little Ann Arbor bubble that I didn't know? That there were swaths of people who didn't have this. To me, broadband access is absolutely a public health issue. Now with COVID-19? We have a lot of people who can do telehealth visits, but you cannot do telehealth? If you do not have broadband. We have students who are? In school via Zoom and their parents are driving them to hotspots at different places in the county? So they can access the broadband that way? What's going to happen to the students when it's, you know, 10 degrees outside? And the roads are covered with ice and especially the backroads, the dirt roads are even worse than the ice? And so what we're doing is really creating a whole nother equity issue? Here in Washtenaw County. One of the things I already did in to address this was to? Talk to our administrator about setting up? A meeting with a cable provider to talk about what we could do to hasten the progress of? Getting broadband out to part rural parts of the county? And to also create affordable broadband plans? For people who can't afford broadband? Sometimes thinking about having internet in your home seems like a luxury, but it's no longer a luxury. It's a utility? And I think that another way I'm going to address that, this issue? Is really start talking about internet access? As a vital utility that we need to get to every person here in Washtenaw County? Based on whether they have the infrastructure there, get them the infrastructure? Or make it affordable for people who can't afford it? Thanks.
I, I, I thought of a term that maybe we can use broadband now, you know, just like? Hearing these things, you're just like, I had no idea. Because of course, you know, I'm in my house with pretty consistent internet and I just don't think about these things, so? Mr. Morgan? What's your feeling?
Yeah, thank you so much. I couldn't agree more, broadband is one of our biggest challenges here for Wash, here in Washtenaw County. As somebody who grew up in rural Michigan? Back when I had dial-up growing up? I can certainly remember the struggle? Very, very clearly. I spent some time recently with my family up in Pinconning, Michigan? And? Tried to do a meeting from there and it was? Horribly difficult? Because the, these rural parts of our communities and across our state and especially here in Washtenaw County? Just don't have the same access? And in this day and age with online classes, with? Everything COVID that you can imagine and shifting everything to Zoom meetings like what we're doing tonight? You just can't participate in society in the same way? If you don't have quality, affordable internet access? And I, so I've known these challenges in our community for a long time? And we've been working to accelerate that work? Working directly with Congresswoman Dingle's office and I've spoken with? Several other members of Congress trying to get? A federal funding for broadband here in our community? Unfortunately, it is extraordinarily expensive and it's not something that we could just? Pass a millage and do? At least not to a degree that I think would be? Affordable for residents? So we need federal support, we need state support? The resources are, are out there? And we just need to continue doing more to secure them? As well as doing the things that Katie's talking about with? Reaching out to the providers? And making sure that everybody has access to broadband? We've been gathering data, we've allocated funding over the last few months here? And have done a lot of work to accelerate it and I really applaud Commissioners Beeman and Machieski who? Who've been leading that work for us on behalf of their districts, so? It's critically important for everyone? Not just to have access to broadband, but for it to be affordable. That is a huge barrier as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Okay, Ms. Sanders, take us out if you would. Ms. Sanders, you're on, you're muted, so unmute please. Thanks.
I would say my less than expert response to that would be? That? I would be looking to, to have? Conversations with private partner? Private and public? Partnerships, so? Jason mentioned, you know, federal support? State support, but there are also, you know, private? Privately owned companies and private entities that? May benefit by helping us to? Carry the weight? Of trying to provide service? We can't forget about school districts? You still have children that live in these areas? And, you know? Maybe that's something that school districts could? Use their? Influence? With the Department of Education to see if there's funding there, I mean, this is? This is an access issue. So without having all of the facts? Maybe it's because I'm an only child, I'm used to inviting multiple people to the table? To see if they're willing to play with me. And there are more than just, you know, a couple of the major giants out there that provide? You know, these services and so perhaps we need to bring them all together? And? You know, say this is what we need, it's not like they're not going to benefit. You're putting people to work? You are providing profits to companies and you're providing services to the residents. So it's a heavy lift? But I think that there is a way that we can try and figure out? How to make this possible, because it's also? A recruitment tool when you, you want people to come and live in your county? And you don't have? The services that they need when they want to live, you know, 10 miles outside of the urban center. Thank you.
Thank you. I learned a lot from all of you answering these questions and I hope the viewers? The participants here tonight and then the, the people that will get to access this video? Oh, will, will gain much better understanding of, of the way that you feel about these issues. So we're going to go to closing remarks now. And again, I just thank you so much for your time tonight. And if you would spend? You've got? 90 seconds for a closing statement, so we're going to start with you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you so much, it's been really great to be with you all tonight, it's been great to be here with Caroline and Katie. I'm looking forward to having Caroline on the Board of Commissioners? And I of course love serving with Katie currently. I guess the, the one thing that we don't really get to do as public officials as often as, as you would think is? Really just share who we are as, as people. We end up in these positions and we, we show up and we try and get policy done? We forget to really introduce ourselves as people sometimes, at least I know I do. So just to share a little bit about me, I grew up in rural northern Michigan on a small family fishery? And we didn't have a whole lot. My mother actually used to say to me? We don't have a whole lot of money, but we have a whole lot of love. And that was my upbringing. It was a small rural conservative community. Certainly as a young LGBTQ individual? Growing up in this community, I gained a lot of experience feeling left out and left behind. That paired with growing up with a disability? Has shaped a lot of my experiences and how I approach government. And it's really the reason that I'm here doing this job today. I'm here because I care about making people's lives better. And over the last three and a half years as a commissioner, I feel like we in Washtenaw County are doing that. We're here to help, we're here to listen? And not just try and? Put a Band-Aid on any of our problems, but truly solve those? Huge, huge problems that our residents are facing. So I'm so proud to be a county commissioner, I'm so proud to be here working with? All these great people in our community? And thank you so much for having this forum tonight.
Thank you, and Ms. Sanders?
So I? Just recently added a quote to my website that says? I wrote it down and now I can't find it, so I'm gonna skip. But it basically talks about the truth being like the lion. You know, all you have to do is set it free and it will prove itself. I'm running, I've, I've been on boards, I don't know, the last 20 years? It's always been my own time? It's always been my own money? I have? Essentially? Financed my own campaign and I've done that on purpose? Because I, I want to legitimately be able to show up? Without? Being swayed any particular way? Other than? Swayed for the benefit of helping people, which I've done my whole life. And so I am looking forward to being able to bring? You know, my? 50 years plus of life experience? In all areas? To the board? In order to help? Pittsfield Township residents who are? The ones that are voting me in? And Washtenaw County residents as a whole? So my heart is as a fighter and that's what I'm bringing to the table? And I look forward to that opportunity. And thank you to my, to, I hope my future commissioners? For allowing me to be here with you today? And to the League of Women Voters for giving us an opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. And lastly, we have Ms. Scott.
Thanks Doug, I like the cameo from your cat too. So I just want to tell you, it is such a pleasure to serve? The residents of District 9 and the residents of Washtenaw County on the Washtenaw County Commission. I served with an amazing group of colleagues? And hopefully we have some really great new colleagues coming in as well? One of them here tonight, Caroline Sanders, so, so that's fantastic. You may know me already as an ICU nurse? And I'm proud of that work that I do. I'm proud of the union work I do and proud of the work I do at, at the county commission? And the, the gestalt of the thrust that runs through all of that work that I do? Is really about advocating for people. That's my passion, I want to stand up. I've always been that way, you can ask my mom? Since I was a little kid and when I see something happening that I think is wrong or could be better? It's my passion to stand up and say like, we can make this better? How can we make a change? And that's what I love about everything that I do. It's what I love about working on the county commission. I hope to continue to do that for two more years? Earn your vote going forward? And that you reach out and talk to me, whatever your opinions are? I want to hear from you, I want to know what you need for our community? And thanks for spending time with us tonight. spending time with us tonight, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for having us here.
Thank you so much, candidates. It's been a real pleasure moderating the session for you guys, and thank you so much, League of Women Voters, for allowing me to host tonight, and all the people in the back scenes that make these videos happen, and I, yeah, thank you so much, it's been really great. So now I'll turn it over to Sally for, for closing statements from the League.
That was terrific. Thanks to all of you. The League thanks the candidates for participating in tonight's forum, and to all those who contributed questions. All our candidate forums will be available for streaming on your computer or smartphone. Go to our website, l w v ann arbor dot org, and look for the link to the programs. In addition, the forums can be viewed on Community Television Network. Please urge your friends and neighbors to watch these videos, too. For additional information on candidates and ballot issues, go to vote411.org, the League's Voter Resource Guide covering local, state, and federal candidates, and current proposals that will appear on your ballot. As a reminder, all registered voters may cast an absentee ballot.